Jason, would you lead us in prayer, please? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven, and in the city of Montevista tonight.
Amen. You need a roll call, please?
Councilor Howard?
Here.
Councilor Lorenz?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
And Mayor Protam Sikola is absent this evening and has been excused, and a quorum has been declared.
Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there is one modification to the agenda. We will be removing G two B Adams State University update. They will not be joining us this evening. And I'm sorry, and we will also be removing N two staff reports for Kids Connection. And we'll go ahead and remove N five, the city attorney report. And we'll go ahead and remove N five, the city attorney report. I'm not sure if he's going to be able to make it this evening or not.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the modifications to the agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Lorenz?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing G two and removing N two and N five.
Okay. Approval of consent agenda minutes, regular meeting from February sixth, review and approval of accounts payable. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve this consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from February sixth, twenty twenty five, and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Lorenz?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we will go to citizen comments and special presentations. We'll do the citizen comments first. City council, welcome your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. And if you have something to say, please come to the podium, put your name and address on that paper that's up there. So anybody have anything they want to share in the first three minutes?
I like speaking as kind of one of my talents. It's gonna be, we'll have to say if you don't mind.
Okay, if you could just speak up a little bit so that we can hear you.
Okay.
And just state your name to the left.
My name is Leanne Harnes. Less than four months ago, my grandson Zell was murdered. He was thirty-one years old and remarkable human being. He also suffered from substance abuse. When I retired, I bought a home in the valley, hoping to provide a place away from the bigger cities, a place where he could thrive. And I was naive in thinking that location would have a bigger impact. In many ways, it was more difficult to find help. I searched the internet, read local papers, talked with health professionals, and made many phone calls in an attempt to find assistance. While I found that help is available, it's not easily accessible. On one occasion, I traveled to an advertised Narcotics Anonymous meeting only to find a prayer group. The NA meeting had not taken place in that location for close to two years. While I believe in the power of prayer, that was not what I was looking for at that time. I was interested in talking to those struggling with addiction, asking what they needed and what they thought would most benefit them in their journey to recovery. I do not have all the answers to the growing gun violence and addiction problems. There are those in this community that have far greater knowledge than I. And many who share the passion to help. My goal is to bring those individuals, groups, and professionals together using a foundation I created entitled zelspirit.org. I'm developing a website that I hope will include all the resources available, such as meetings, counseling, groups, other foundations, services, and events, all in one place with current information. The feedback I've received has been great. District attorney, prosecutors, nurses, mental health professionals, and addiction program leaders. The one area I'm having trouble reaching is law enforcement. I've placed several calls to police departments, asking for a few minutes of time to discuss my endeavor and have not received return calls. This element is critical, in my opinion. I know from experience that law enforcement is often seen as the enemy to those struggling. While the police are tasked with enforcing the law, and many addicts and gun offenders have a history of legal issues, the police are also here to serve and protect. It is critical, in my opinion, that the positive work officers do is amplified. I come from a family of many law enforcement officers and know that the desire to help is strong. My goal tonight was to introduce myself and the foundation, and to let you know I intend to pursue the goal of providing a guide to resources in an accessible and easy to use format, starting in the valley and eventually covering the state. In closing, I want to say that my grandson was a helper. We had many conversations about his experiences and what he could do to help others while in recovery. His death was not the direct result of drugs. He was defending a young woman being harassed. The harasser immediately pulled a gun and without hesitating shot my unarmed grandson. He was charged with two counts of first degree murder, two young lives lost. While I will never again have the opportunity to hug my grandson and hearing say, I got you granny. The other young man involved at justice served will never again see the outside of a jail cell. My grief and my desire to help are driving me, and I'm asking for your support along the way through open communication and exchange of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was it Leanne?
Yes.
Leanne, if you would write your phone number down or any mail address, then I will make sure someone from the police department contacts you next week. And thank you for sharing yourself story, and I'm so sorry for your loss.
But I are not.
What?
Did you get my text?
No, sir.
Sending notes, dude. I'm sorry, I'm not a quick texter. I'm not like the kids.
Mickey, I'm.
Okay. Um, there's quite a few of you here, and I'm sure I know why. After the presentation, we will be, will not be taking comments. So if you have comments in regards to presentations, I would appreciate it if you do it at this point. Okay, is there any other citizen comments? Well, it's good to see all the citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we will move to scheduled appearances, and our first one is Colorado Trust with Brett Parsons.
Good evening. I hope everyone's been well today. My name is Brett Parsons. I'm an investment director of investment services for Colorado Trust Investment Pool. And I function as an investment advisor representative. So I'm here tonight just to give you a brief overview of the Colorado Trust program. The city's participated for many years to say thank you for your business, to share our performance results for fiscal year twenty twenty four, and then a rate outlook for twenty twenty five and beyond. So I believe and I'm hoping that we're going to share the presentation, and I can walk through my notes here.
You are.
Perfect. So a little bit of background about myself, I've been with Colorado Trust for a little over two years. I'm the relationship manager for the San Luis Valley area, so I'll cover all the counties down here. Historically, I'm an accountant in the K twelve setting by trade. I'll CFO and budget director at a number of school years, for a number of years prior to coming to Colorado Trust. And I'm a Colorado Trust participant those years, and that's how I made the transition over to investment advisory. So you can go ahead and do the second slide. So disclosure, first off, this is not legal advice, so please consult proper counsel if appropriate. And next up, Colorado Trust is not a bank, so we'll talk more about investment vehicles and what that means in a few minutes. Next slide. So first off, an overview of Colorado Trust, what it is. So Colorado Trust is a local government investment pool, LGIP, as authorized under Colorado by statutes. In our case in particular, we're in our fortieth year of operation this year, so we're celebrating our fortieth anniversary. We're the oldest and largest LGIP in Colorado, so we serve a little over two thousand participants. Only local governments are eligible to participate, and we're currently managing around fourteen point eight billion dollars across the state. So the purpose of Colorado Trust and why the Pooling Act in the early eighties was passed was to allow for a mechanism for local governments to pull together, join their resources, and hire investment advisory and administrative staff to do this on behalf of the local governments. So everything that we're doing, everything we're investing in, you can do on your own. It just takes a lot of time and overhead to go and buy treasuries, agencies, commercial paper, and deal with the custodian bank and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the structure. Like all public fund investing, the goal of public funds, when you're doing this kind of work, is number one, preservation of principal. Number two, maintaining adequate liquidity. Number three, trying to seek a market rate of return. And we'll talk more about those current numbers here in a sec. Next slide. So as far as how the the program is set up and how it's organized, so it's actually set up as a trust. The trust is administered by a board of trustees. It works very similar to any local government. So this is the list of the current board of trustees. So we have representation from all forms of local government, so municipalities, school districts, counties, and special districts are represented. The board of trustees, engaging contracts, hire the service providers, and do all the stuff that is required to administer the program. If you go to the next slide, we can see a breakdown of participants by type who's currently participating. So you can see the the various districts in the left, and then the right, we have some actual count by various types. So if you're really observant, observant like statistics, you'll probably say, hey, there's only sixty-four counties. How do you have sixty-eight? Public trustees offices oftentimes have a separate account with Colorado Trust, so they're counting more than once. School districts is the same thing. There's one hundred and seventy-eight public K twelve schools in the state, but charter schools are their own financial reporting entity. They invest in Colorado Trust on their own, so that's how we have numbers that are higher than what some of those are. Special districts generally, though, make up the largest participant by breakdown across the pool. Next slide. So talking about our portfolios and how our clients choose to invest. So we offer three portfolios, Colorado Trust Prime, Plus, and Edge. Edge is our longer term investment vehicle. We don't have a whole lot of participation in that. Majority of our participants use Colorado Trust Prime or Plus, so we'll stick with those two columns right there. So when you think about the structure, how it works, if you're familiar with a money market fund, the one dollar stable in a V D share price investment vehicle, Colorado Trust and LGIP in general works very similar to that, with the exception of we're only for local governments, and you have to follow state statute in your respective state. Generally, the way that our maturity of an LGIP is going to be much shorter than a comparable money fund to limit interest rate risk and volatility in pricing. So if you look at Colorado Trust Prime, Colorado Trust Plus, they work identically. The only difference is what they are allowed to invest in. So I'll talk about how they're similar, then I'll talk on the next slide about how they're different. So the purpose of Colorado Trust is just going to be short term liquidity, both triple A M rated by Standard and Poor's. You know, they will with no minimum investment, no maximum investment, and limited withdrawals, limited subaccounts. And a couple of things that's unique for us is dividends apply and accrue daily instead of monthly or quarterly like a C D would be. And then we also use what's called fair value reporting. So we mark to market at the close of each business day. So if you go to our website, you can see the share price. We publish the daily share price update digits for transparency, so we have a whole lot of information on the website. As far as, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So as far as what they invest in, what the difference is, so Colorado Trust Prime is what you call a government style fund. So it only invests in treasuries, agencies, and repurchase agreements of the same. So as such, it's considered to not have credit risk because as I don't show back on the full payment credit of the US government or the implied backing in case of the agencies. And then we have Colorado Trust Plus is our other portfolio, which is by far the most popular portfolio. It also invests in commercial paper, so this is going to be short term, highly rated debt offering by large corporations. For us, we have an in-house credit team of five individuals that do continual credit research. At any given time, we have a, we call it a menu, approved menu that portfolio management can trade in of approximately two hundred commercial paper issuers. And then whenever you invest in Plus, as an investor, you expect a higher rate of return because you're undertaking credit risk, which is the risk that one of these issuers could be involved. So that's that's the breakout of the two portfolios. We'll see it more in a couple of slides, but the district has portfolios in both. And just for your information, Colorado Trust Prime daily rate as of today is four point two seven percent. And then Colorado Trust Plus daily yield is four point four seven percent, so there's twenty basis points, point two percent spread between. In the bottom right corner, you can see the total asset, so seven hundred, this kind of block, I will symbol. The seven hundred million dollar number is the number of funds invested in Colorado Trust Prime as of fiscal year, and the thirteen point four billion is Colorado Trust Plus. So you can see a lot more, a lot more is invested in Plus. And next slide. So this is just an overview, and this this chart here just shows if you invested X number of dollars in one of the, any of these portfolios, how much would you have returned over calendar year and fiscal year in your case, twenty twenty four? And what I like to show on this chart is really on the right side. So the sum of those numbers of Prime, Plus, and Edge, that is investment income that was distributed to Colorado Trust participants in twenty twenty four. So seven hundred eighty million dollars of dividend income went to participants across the state. And next slide. Also, jogging into the 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 city's actual accounts, like I mentioned, we have Prime and Plus. So this is what's called an on demand report, so you can run these at any time for your entity's portfolio. I like to run it in the calendar year because the number in the top right corner, average yield for the period, is your entity specific number that takes into account debits, credits, and then interest in the compounding effect of those over the year. So you can see the city has a small balance, and I can't see that far, some kind of going on here in my notes here. The city has a small balance in Colorado Trust Prime. You can see that the average yield over fiscal year twenty twenty four was five point zero six percent. You can see, I think it's forty-seven hundred dollars of interest income earned in twenty twenty four. And then if you go to the next slide, we can see the majority of the city's holdings in Colorado Trust or in Colorado Trust Plus. So those various lines, they represent what we call a subaccount, so you can see your cash account, your debt service, and those. You can see any transactions, the city's utilizing it to make regular contributions and payments for the debt service. And then you can see combined interest numbers for the year. So over fifty-seven thousand dollars of interest income off this portfolio for the city during the year, and the average yield for that time period, five point two eight percent. So that's around twenty-two basis points spread between the two. That spread changes over time. In my two years with Colorado Trust, I've seen it as narrow, it's about ten basis points, point one percent, and it's wide as thirty basis points. So it kind of depends on market price for what the spread looks like. The last thing I wanted to mention here, really related to the city, is I pulled the city's historic documents, and the city joined Colorado Trust in December of nineteen ninety-eight. So you've been utilizing the investment pool for over twenty-five years. I just want to take a minute and recognize that and say thanks to your business all over this time period. Next slide. So looking forward to what we're expecting for twenty twenty five. So this document here is the Fed dot line. This is released quarterly at the Fed meeting, and this here is from the December meeting. So the yellow dots represent the voting members of the F O M C, and you can see that at the end of twenty twenty four, the Fed Fund target rate is a range of four point two five to four point five percent, and the number will kind of be in the middle there. And what the green line represents is the median expectation of the voting members over the upcoming years. And each of those horizontal lines for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six represents expectation for rates at the end of the year. So if you look at this, couple of takeaways, the Fed's expecting two rate cuts in twenty twenty five, bringing bringing the target rate down from four and a quarter to four fifty to three and three quarters before. So fifty basis point cut expected over the year. But the real takeaway for long term budget planning is if you look out to twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven, the Fed is setting the narrative and the story that they're not planning on going back to the zero rate environment. So if you look over the history, like going back to the fifties, the Fed Fund target rate never really stayed at zero, other than for very short terms to kickstart the economy. And the period from two thousand nine to two thousand seventeen is really like an anomaly in like a monetary policy and what the Fed does. So they're kind of setting the story. And if you go to the next slide, this is what's called the market based probability of a rate cut. So the Fed releases that dot clock quarterly, it's highly valuable the day they release it, and then it loses confidence every day for the next nine days. And there's also, while the Fed is apolitical, there definitely can't be some political considerations and implications with some of the stuff the Fed uses. So this here is pure market. So this is, if you're a Fed Fund future trader as of, I think that was last week, what are you betting on? What are you expecting and what contracts are you buying? So the real takeaway is due to some, I guess you'd say mostly favorable economic news. GDP continuing to come in high, jobs still coming in high, unemployment still very low. And as of last week, the core P C inflation number really stuck at that three percent, and not really dipping below that. The markets are thinking there's going to be fewer cuts than what the Fed previously anticipated. So what this chart shows is the markets are not anticipating a full rate cut until September of twenty five. So that will be a point two five percent cut in September. And the real takeaway is this not fully pricing in a second cut until December of twenty twenty six. So all things considered, we think higher rates are most likely going to be here to stay for a little while with the real uncertainty and volatility falling around President Trump's administration, while the markets decipher what he's saying, what he's going to do, what his economic policy looks like. And that's everything from tariffs to geopolitical issues. So really just kind of keep your ear to the ground. A lot of this is going to be subject to change depending on what happens there, but this is what the markets really are pricing at at this point in time. Also, at this point, I know I've gone over my allotted time, but I want to open it up for questions and see if there's any questions in the group or if anything I can help you guys out with.
No, that's a lot of information.
Yeah, sorry. I hope it wasn't too much. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you for your business. If we can ever help in any way, please reach out, let me know, okay?
All right.
Take care.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks. You can have a go.
Hey, the next one on the agenda for scheduled appearance is S L V Aquatics update.
Hello, thanks for having me tonight. My name's Jenny Earring with S L V Aquatics. We visited with you last October and got a red, a resolution from you of support for our project. And I might ask of you tonight is an update to that resolution. I've got, we've got some updated information. We're going to submit a second service plan to the Board of County Commissioners on March tenth. So I'll go through with a quick update. You can't see our website there, but it's W W W dot S L V Aquatics dot O R G. And I especially encourage you to to look at the F A Q there, where there are a lot of details, a lot of components to this project. Next slide, please. Okay, just a reminder of what the pool looks like. It's twenty-three thousand square feet. It's got two bodies of water in it. There's, they're at two different temperatures, which will save in heating costs so that we can keep the six lane lap pool with a diving well at a cooler temperature. That temperature will be about eighty, eighty-five degrees. The other pool is equal in size. You can see that in that schematic, and that's a warmer temperature pool. It has a zero entry, meaning there's no steps, a shallow area for play on the left hand side. The middle side is a swimming area, maybe about the size, two thirds of the size of this room. And then the the right hand side is a current pool or a lazy river, which is super fun to play with. And then there's a a large slide in the corner there. So that's our our design. The there's also also a diving well in the lap pool. And so the lap pool accommodates lap swimming, but it also accommodates all kinds of other activities, swimming lessons, kayak lessons, scuba lessons, aqua size. Anyway, that's a quick reminder of what our pool schematic is. That has not changed. Next slide, please. This is the item that has changed in our proposal. The boundaries of our Park and Rec District is now the entirety of Rio Grande County. There are no exclusions, and that is what I specifically am requesting you alter in your letter of support. Number one in the letter, the October letter of support says, "Support for the formation of a Park and Rec District with boundaries that are coterminous with the boundaries of Rio Grande County." That's where you could insert a period and delete the rest of that sentence because that talks about exclusions in the county, and there are no exclusions any longer. So we're capturing South Cork and we're capturing Del Norte. Those are the big differences between our two proposals. We had, we had excluded Del Norte because they have a D Mountain Parks and Rec, and we had understood statute to say that you cannot have overlapping park and rec districts. But a closer look at statute says that you cannot have overlapping services from a park and rec district. D Mountain Parks and Rec does not and never intends to provide aquatic resources. And that's why we're allowed to capture Del Norte into our new service area. Okay, next slide. All right, so the cost of the pool is twenty-four million dollars, and it would be paid for with mill levy increases on property tax. There'd be two mill levies. One would be six point five mills, and that would cover the capital construction, twenty-four million dollars, and the bond financing for that. The second mill is two point zero mills, and that is the operating costs. And dedicated operating cost, dedicated operating income is what will make this project sustainable into the future and is one of the primary differences between the old Sky High Pool, dedicated operating expenses. Just to be clear, the Park and Rec District is its own government entity. So this won't be a city facility, and it won't be a county facility. It'll be the Park and Rec District with its own governing board. We intend to have the pool in the city of Montevista, and that's why we're looking for your resolution of support. And you know, Montevista is the largest municipality in our county, and makes sense to put it here. This is where we used to have a pool as well. So what is eight point five? Well, first of all, so it's eight point five mill levy is the ask of the voter now. Our prior effort was sixteen point eight six mill levies. So we're cutting the the tax in half. So what does eight point six, eight point five mean to a resident of Montevista? Eight point five mills is equivalent to four dollars and seventy-five cents for every one hundred thousand dollars of property value. So the average home price in Montevista is two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which would mean that that homeowner would pay eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents a month for the swimming pool. And that's half of what our prior proposal was. Okay, next slide. Will grant and foundation money help fund this project? And the answer is yes. And we've spoken with many of the grant, granting agent or organizations, Dan Schutz, Gates, Mustard, Daniels, Colorado Health Foundation, many others. They've all said they're very supportive, but they've said pass the vote, and then we will, then we will consider your application. We have received a one hundred thousand donation commitment once the 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 vote passes from an anonymous donor. So that's exciting. And really, when we show, when we pass the vote, show the level of support in our community, we anticipate our, these foundations to be pretty. Are these foundations to be pretty, pretty impressed in a year to support us. Okay, next slide. So, um, our next steps, um, will be submitting the new service plan to the Board of County Commissioners, March tenth. Uh, that will, there'll be a Board of County Commissioners public hearing in April or May. Prior to that public hearing, we'll have some open houses at Sky High. We had one open house last time. Well, we'll, I think we'll seek to have two this time. Um, with B O C C approval, we'll go before a judge. Um, with B O C C approval, we'll also, uh, need to go out and get, um, signatures on a petition. I believe we need about three hundred. I'm not entirely sure. Um. And in the meantime, well, and after that process, we'll fundraise to pay for the election. The election will be November fourth, twenty twenty five. Um, there'll be five questions on the ballot. One is to form the district. A second is the Board of Directors for the District. A third is the six point five mills for the bonding, the capital construction. The fourth question is the two point oh mills for operating expenses and the fifth question is, um, debreusing. Uh, the taper issue and, um, we'll need all five to pass. Let's see next. And again, um, our, I encourage you to look at our website and the F A Q. So that you get accurate information. Um, there's also contacts, X L S L V Aquatics dot org. Is our, um, email address if you'd like to email with a question. And if you had any question, I'd be happy to answer them. Yeah.
Do you intend to include agglans now?
Oh, no, no, um, agglans greater than forty acres are not included and that is not a choice on our behalf. That is in statute.
So we'll leave that in. How about South Fork? I mean, initially they were not excited about any sense of their.
We don't anticipate they will be excited about it. Um, but South Fork has, um. It's about seventy percent or maybe a little higher of South Fork properties or second homes. And if you break that down, break that out more, most of that seventy percent are. People who live, um, are from out of state.
So the, the other thing is. This has to go to County Commissioners, right? You're going to fund. The, the effort will fund a vote if the Commissioners approve a vote. That's right.
Yes, because so our prior effort was in May special election and in May special elections, you have to pay for the entire election. Because we'll be in the general election, we'll only have to pay for some of that.
But. The effort will pay for that, right? The portion that's appropriate.
The fundraising to pay for the election?
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually have to have a separate, um, a nonprofit cannot receive funds and pay for an election. We have a separate account. It's called Go Swim. That funds the election and we have about six thousand in that account and we need, we, we suspect ten thousand.
So the whole effort puts this up to the voters in the end.
Yes, absolutely. It's, um, yeah, it's up to the voter to decide. Is this something they want? In their community, um, is this something they're willing to pay for? And we're certainly hopeful that, um, our community is allowed to have that opportunity. It's frustrating when three individuals decide what we can express our opinion on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just my questions.
Anyone else? So we would really appreciate your, the S L V Aquatics would appreciate your support with that letter of resolution. Um, our early com, uh, meetings with Gigi and Rob Vance talking about, um. You know, uh, there, we've got four potential locations. All of that's on our, on our, um, website. We discussed with Gigi and Rob, the, um. The pros and cons, the ins and outs of the infrastructure needs in different locations. Um, once we pass the vote, vote and we actually have money to enter into an agreement for. Um, a location for the pool. That's when all the math will come in to figure out where's the most cost effective place to put the pool.
So I have two questions for you, Jenny. One is what's it going to do to the businesses earlier?
It will be very beneficial to the businesses here. It will bring traffic to our town. Um, I feel like if, if you ask people who don't live in Montevista, what's a reason to go to Montevista? They're going to say Dairy Queen. And now it will be the pool and Dairy Queen. Um, and I think if you think of it in terms of, um. Let's say, um, a parent is bringing three kids into town for swimming lessons. Drop them off at the pool and then they've got forty-five minutes to kill. Then, you know, you run a few errands in town. So maybe you go to our grocery store and fill up your tank of gas here then instead of. And another one of our towns in Montevista or in, in the valley. Also, this will be the home swimming pool for at least two competitive swim leagues. There's a, um, the S L P Gators is like ages six to eighteen and they, um. They would, there, there's a swim league in the summer and it's a south, it's a southeast Colorado swim league. And, um, when you host a meet, you have, uh, upwards of two hundred, two hundred and fifty kids coming for the weekend to compete. Um, they're here for Friday, Saturday and Sunday. They come with their, their families. They spend, you know, the night, they eat in the restaurants, all of that. So it's, it's, you know, it's as good as. As, um, you know, hosting a big wrestling, um, tournament or something at the school. Um, similarly, there's a girls' three A, uh, um, high school swim team. So any, any girl in any of our school districts in the valley could be in, um, could be on, uh, this swim team. And they would host, um, at least one meet and that is. Um, that's not usually over a weekend and overnight, but it brings many, many people to town.
What about taxing the businesses as if for citizens and their properties? What about the businesses?
So there, there, a mill levy does impact commercial, excuse me, um. Commercial ta- property tax and commercial property tax is higher than, um, residential property tax. The average. We did the average of, and this is an F A Q on our, on our website. But I believe the average commercial business would see an increase of twenty dollars a month. With this new, um, with this mill levy. Which I think would twenty, twenty bucks a month with more traffic in town. Um, is, is a, is a good investment. This is an investment in our community. It's the way we see this, this pool initiative.
Can you explain what you said, debreusing?
Debruising is required. It allows us to keep all the money that comes in. To, um, buy with the tax initiative and not have to refund it back to the, um. Back to the voter in, um, in times of economic. Higher prosperity that I think that GD, if you have a more eloquent way of describing debruising.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
But it, it has to do with the amount of income that's coming in and the rate of inflation. And they can't supersede each other and so the balance is returned to the taxpayer.
And under debris, debruising, we would get to keep that money. One of the components of our, um, our second plan that we're submitting. We adj- we also addressed a lot of the ca- the concerns that people voiced at the public hearing. One of which was, um, and we've, we've added a three percent increase in operating expenses through, through the years. Um, we've also added, um, a contingency fund for unexpected, um, repairs or maintenance. And so then that's like twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And so something like debruising is important to make sure that, that those funds are funded in, um, and, and. Basically, make us fiscally sound.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll be your last.
Jenny, I appreciate the presentation. Um, I would like to table this so council has time to talk about this and look at this.
Yep.
Again, till our next meeting on March sixth.
Okay. Yeah. And, and my only request is if you're, and if you're. If you do a resolution of support, we would really like to include it in our service plan and we were going to turn that in on the tenth. So is it possible for that turnaround with your approval?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audit guideline with Wall Smith and Bateman.
So this is a very, um, sexy document, nine pages of really dry, dry, uh. Accounting. The, it's, it, this is very standard. We passed it, we pass it every year. The one thing that I want to bring to your attention is that. The dollar amount, um, is sixty-four hundred dollars more than last year. Because we are going to have to do what they call a single audit because of some federal dollars that were brought in. And so that is treated differently. So the whole, um, audit for this year is not to exceed. Twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So we have a letter of commitment that I need the mayor to sign and. Wall Smith and Bateman is happy to have us as a customer and would like to get started.
I make a motion that, uh, we accept this proposal from Wall Smith and Bateman to do the annual audit. And authorize the mayor and city manager to sign as a party. It's been moved and seconded to. Prove the audit guideline to Wall Smith and Bateman and have the mayor sign. Is there any other discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the audit commitment letter for Wall Smith and Bateman. Bateman and allow for mayor and city manager to sign.
DJ, annual three mile plan update.
So, uh, three month and a day, I apologize Brad or Mr. or Council Watson. I didn't realize. Until when I'm sitting just now that you were not on the council when we did our last three miles.
No, we don't.
Um, so I did not write a copy of it because I did, you guys have all seen it before. It's an annual recertification. Uh, we have not expanded our boundaries. We've not had any serious interest in annexation. So there's been no changes to the boundary. Um, I talked to planning and zoning commission. They did recommend that we just approve it as it was last year without any changes. Um, next year, however, there will be some changes to it. Not that we're going to annex him, but we have some better software. So right now the three mile plan has a circular, it's a circumference of three miles from the edges of town. I'm going to actually go through and redo the map so that it's by parcel so that the parcel that would be included in it. Will be an actual representation of the map as opposed to a generic line. Um, our G I S software that we had when we did the map originally. Did not allow me to do that. So the new one will allow me to make some good changes. So we'll have a more, uh, a better depiction. And then once we redo the land use code or once we finish that, there'll be some other updates. But for this year, there's no changes to it. Um, it is the same as it was last time and I can send you a copy if you would like. Uh, so that is all that that one is. Any questions?
If the, uh, three mile boundary intersects a portion of a parcel, is that whole parcel included?
Yes, which is why I'll adjust the boundary so that it gives an actual reflection. So I just need a motion to exert, to re-authorize the three mile plan from twenty twenty four.
And this is by state statute.
Yes, by state statute. I can give you the idea. Sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Make a motion to adopt the three mile, Montevista three mile plan for twenty twenty five. Been moved in second to adopt the three mile plan. Update. Is there any discussion?
I'm just getting the national.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt the annual three mile plan as updated with no changes. Uh, presented by DJ Underley, the plan.
Okay.
Are you going to do resolution twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five dash oh four? That's my mistake to DJ come.
And you can get this report if you want, DJ.
Sure, he, he was going to do it for you.
You're welcome to. Good evening, council. Um, so DJ was actually a huge help in putting together some of the numbers for this, um. And using Placer AI, we're a lot more accurate and the numbers of our guests and number of visits that we were able to. Um, put together for our, um, end of the year report. So I know we're having some technical difficulties. So in your packet, you should have received.
I can share that still.
Okay.
We have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just has some pretty pictures. I like the pretty pictures. Come on now.
We see him.
Nope, I can't show it. Sorry.
I can replace it and you can see on your laptops if you have them. Um, so number of events. So in twenty twenty-two, we had a hundred and seventy-six events. Twenty twenty-three, we had four hundred and seventy. And in twenty twenty-four, we had five hundred and twenty-three. So we increased by fifty-three events last year. Um, number of days booked, um, again, twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and seventy-one days where we had at least one event on property. Uh, twenty twenty-three, we have two hundred and sixty-nine and twenty twenty-four, we increased it by eleven for two hundred and eighty days. This one's where the pretty picture really shows you some better data. Um, so our most popular events are obviously business meetings, baby showers, birthday parties, educational trainings, weddings, quinceañeras. Rodeos, food distribution, recreation, appreciation dinners, open walking, um, banquets, memorials, funerals. And then we have kind of another category that doesn't really fit any of that. Um, unfortunately, a lot of those did decrease in twenty twenty-four, uh, with the exception of rodeos. Which increased by twenty events, um, in twenty twenty-four as well as recreation and open walking. Um, and the reason for that is twenty twenty-four was the first year that we started using the basketball courts. So a lot of the basketball, volleyball, pickleball, all of that is included in these numbers for twenty twenty-four. Two, thank you. See, it makes a huge difference. Um, if you'll scroll down.
Keep going.
One more. There we go. So that just gives you a, a better visual of what our, um, most popular events have done over the last three years since we've been open.
And, and, uh, the bottom, what does that say on the bottom? What are those words?
Um, the ones that are going. Those are the events that I just said verbally. It is tiny writing.
You're going to fix that, right?
I can. I can zoom in for you. So if we go to the next one, um, this I didn't have in my previous, um, reports. And I thought it was important for you guys to see. Um, so city events that are considered, um, city sponsored. Or anything that we do for recreation, the police department, um, public works. As well as things like when we have city council over there or any public meetings, community meetings. Um, we don't obviously charge the city to use its own space. So this is a representation of the last two years. So twenty-two and twenty, or twenty-three and twenty-four for the number of free, no charge events that the city has done at Sky High. And again, obviously recreation and open walking, um, we started using the basketball courts and we added more days for open walking. Um, everything else has stayed pretty similar. Um, the police department has added a couple of extra trainings. But other than that, it's stayed pretty even throughout the two. The police department has added a couple of extra trainings, but other than that, it's stayed pretty even throughout the two years. Go go scroll down. Again, I like pretty pictures, so this just breaks it down um, per event per year. So this is twenty twenty three. Um, again, as you can see, recreation and open walking are a huge portion of that. Um, and then the breakdown for public works, police and other. Somewhere for twenty four. So this is the really fun one. Um, and it showed me just how inaccurate my uh, physical manual accounting of guests was throughout the two previous years. Um, so in. Um, DJs uh, can break it down per visits, visit tours, and then visit frequency. Um, so the number of visits is it's going to count uh, Dale every time he comes to Sky High. Where is um, for visitors, it's only counting him once. Okay, he came to Sky High once. Um, so it's not counting him for coming to Stampede and to Crane Festival and at conference and each individual. Um, so I like to look at the visits. Um, so in twenty twenty two, we had seventy seven point seven thousand. Um, twenty three, we had a hundred and three thousand and twenty four, we dropped a little bit to ninety nine thousand. Um. That can be because we had a slight drop in our number of attendance for Stampede. We also lost a couple of events that we had the previous year, such as the Pow Wow. Um, and some of those that were bringing in a little bit bigger numbers. But still. A huge number of visitors that we're having to the Sky High property and bringing into Montevista. So with place or AI, we were able to get a little bit more detailed into where our visitors are coming from. Um, so I have a slide for each year. So in twenty twenty four, um, a little under eighty five thousand visitors were from within the San Luis Valley. Um, so that's eighty five percent of percent of all of our visitors are from within the San Luis Valley. Um, a little over ten thousand visitors were from outside the valley, but still within Colorado. Um, and then thirty eight. Hundred visitors were from outside of Colorado. So in twenty three, we had more participation um, from visitors with inside the valley. Um. Again, our numbers were higher in twenty three, so that's going to account for some of this. Um, we had higher um, number of visitors from within Colorado, the outside of the valley. Um, and just slightly a little bit more from outside of Colorado for twenty three. And twenty two, with it being our first year being open, we didn't have the full year as we were still finishing up some of the construction. Um, but still, uh, majority of our visitors again are from the valley, but still a a really big chunk of them are still within from Colorado, but not the valley. And then the really fun page that everybody wants to look at. Um. So as you look at this, um, that the debt service payment, um. Not necessarily coming from the city. We did have the alcohol foundation that was taking care of that, but we did pay that off in twenty twenty four, so that will drop off of reports after this. Um, as you can see, our number of events are going up. Um, our number of expenses are going down. Um, our rental income went up, um, and our cost per event. It's really hard to. To say that that's really our cost per event, but it's going to be an average for our cost per event. Um, but it's also going down as we're getting more um. More events going on and we're getting better at putting on our events. Any questions about the financial side of that? No. All right. Questions in general about any other report?
What's uh? Were you at today with?
You have to wait for my staff report. I don't have those numbers with me.
Sorry, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. All right, Mr. Enderley.
This is where everybody else leaves.
We're ready for your resolution now, man.
So just a little bit about this resolution, um. For you guys. So the URA owns four properties we've talked about before. Um, and they are applying for some predevelopment funds. Because they do not have a full-time staff, do not have a bank account or budget. Entity outside of the city. They cannot apply for the grant and actually get it. Um, so we'll be acting as if you guys approve as the fiscal agent for. Um, them, which is the same thing they did back in twenty nineteen for the CBD G, CBD G grant. Um, and we do it. We've done it a few times. We're doing it currently for. Um, a ready grant for some students at the high school to get. Uh, some civic experience. So we've done this several times in the past. Um, so this won't be about a twenty five thousand dollar grant. I say about because I'm still waiting for some of my figures and facts to come back in. Um, so I don't know what the exact number is. It won't exceed twenty five thousand dollars for the grant. It's a state grant, so it's not uh, dependent upon the federal funds. We're a little shy for federal funds right now, just because we've. Kind of gotten bitten recently. Um, so this would be a state grant um, through the Department of Housing through uh, the Department of Housing. And again, it's for predevelopment. So what we're looking for here is survey fees, appraisal fees, real estate lawyer fees. Um, things that we need to do so that we can get ready to part with the projects or either part with the project toward a developer. Or so that we can develop it on. So is there any questions about? What we're doing? Okay, I'm going to read it, and I didn't write all of it, so if I stumble, it's because of all of that. Um. Allowing for the city of Montevista to apply for a grant with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing for Affordable Housing Initiative. And act and act as fiscal agent for the Urban Renewal Authority and allow for the City Planning and Community Development Director to sign related documents, including payment requests. Whereas the city of Montevista. State of Colorado has approved an application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Division of Housing for Funds for. Montevista Urban Renewal Affordable Housing Initiative and whereas the city of Montevista, City of Montevista, Colorado certified by resolution. That the person named below has full signatory authority in regard to all contracts, correspond documents associated with entering. Associated with agreements entered into by the city of Montevista. Dwayne Enderly, City Planning Community Development Director. Now therefore let it be resolved that Dwayne Enderly, City Planning and Community Development Director. An agent of the city of Montevista for the purpose of authorizing and signing payment requests. Quarterly financial status reports. Quarterly project performance reports and longer documents as it pertains to this housing grant. And that's DOH wording, so that's why it's choppy and weird. So I need a motion for that.
And so the copy that you have in your packet, we added um, the words at the end of this as far as it limits. Only towards this grant, so. DJ won't be. Going rogue and running the city and signing other documents and grants and such.
Just as well.
I motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty five dash four allowing for the city of Montevista to apply for a grant with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing for Affordable Housing Initiative. And act as fiscal agent for the Urban Renewal Authority and allow for the City Planning and Community Development Director to sign related documents, including payment requests.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two zero two five dash zero four. Aligning for the city of Montevista to apply for a grant with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing. For Affordable Housing Initiative and act as fiscal agent for the Urban Renewal Authority and allow the City Planning and Community Development Director to sign related documents, including payment requests. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four. Allowing for the city of Montevista to apply for a grant with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Division of Housing for Affordable Housing Initiative. And act as a pass through for the Urban Renewal Authority and allow for city planner. And Community Development Coordinator DJ Enderly to sign related documents, including payment requests.
All right.
As relay.
Uh, contracts, agreements and leases. Uh. Separation agreement, agreement, Sean McDonough.
So council, there was a claim that was made by former chief of police Sean McDonough. And working closely with our outside counsel and Andrew Ringel, who is on Zoom this evening. Our city attorney, Jean Farish, and a couple of the SIRSAA attorneys. Um, Shannon and I. We came to a resolution with Mr. McDonough. Um. We will be paying him thirty five thousand dollars. Half of that will be paid by SIRSAA. And the other half then by the city. So I am hoping or what I'm asking is that you. Make a motion to give me the authority to sign the agreement. We will not be talking any further about this incident. Um. It will help our our police department move on and the community to get past this. And so that we can find. The person that is going to be the right fit for our community. Um, I want to.
I make a motion to approve uh, settlement agreement and to move forward.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the agreement. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow for city manager Gigi Dennis to sign. The agreement for separation with uh, Sean McDonough.
Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Andrew, you're.
It didn't uh. I'm if you can't hear me, I apologize. It's not on. See, Andrew, thank you. All right, receiving approved financial reports, un-audited December financials, Judy Phillips.
I think you just said that we you do not have to approve the financials just.
What was that?
You do not need to approve the financials. I just need to review them with you, so. Um. I think we usually read the memos, but I didn't bring it with me, so. In the essence of nice time was all over that memo. Um, we'll just do the uh, slideshow. So this is the December twenty twenty four and audited financial reports. I've been. Uh, working like crazy to get all the closing entries done. Still have a few yet to do, so. This is not complete, but very close. Um, the city has completed a hundred percent of the twenty twenty four fiscal year. Cash balance in the main checking account. Is in the general fund is three million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars. In the water fund. Four hundred and sixty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars. Sewer fund, one million, five hundred and twenty three, seven hundred and sixteen. Revenue and excess of expenditures in the general fund, six hundred and eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and forty three dollars. Water fund. Hundred and seventy seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sewer fund, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars. Total expenditures as a percent of the approved budget amounts in the general fund, ninety six percent. Water fund, eighty percent and sewer fund, sixty four percent. I will move to the balance sheet, council receivable. Uh, the general fund decrease from December of twenty twenty three of eighty three thousand was related to a sixty seven thousand dollars. It was due from grant funds in twenty twenty three. And sales tax receivable for last year was much higher, so. Um. Water fund increase of fourteen thousand is primarily related to the receivable for utility buildings. And the sewer fund increase was also related to receivable for utility buildings, however, was mostly offset by funds due from grants. Uh, balance sheet accounts payable comparative. Uh, AP in the general fund is lower than last year due to three invoices for IT services that were put in in December but not paid until January. The water fund change is not significant. Sewer fund increase. Is also due to a design invoice for over sixty thousand that was put in December and paid in January. Now the good part. Yes. Um, overall general fund revenues on the chart do not show much of an increase. Kind of freaked me out at first until I looked into it, figured out what it was. Uh, this was due to the fact that in December of twenty three, there was an additional Sky High donation from the Reed family. Uh, that led to an early payoff of the loan of over five hundred thousand. So in December twenty three, we got an extra five hundred thousand in that. Made us look like we had a lot more revenue last year. Um, if we remove that five hundred thousand and and look at the increase that. We've had uh, in twenty twenty four, it's um, mostly based on uh, tax revenue. We had a slight increase in business licenses and building permits. Uh, federal grant revenue, including ARPA funds that were allocated in late twenty twenty four. We had an increase in recreation sports fees. Investment income is up slightly. PD and miscellaneous grant income is up by seventy five thousand dollars. And increase in Sky High rent was about forty two thousand from last year. Uh, water fund decrease was related to ARPA funds received in for the Dennis Street project last year, but we didn't have this year. Sewer fund overall increase was related to an increase in state grant funds for the uh, wastewater engineering. And increased charges for services of about three hundred thousand and new new sewer tanks of seventeen thousand. Uh, general fund. One more. Thank you. Uh, general fund revenues averaged four hundred and seventy four thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars per month. November's revenue fell below that average. December was up to grant rev was up due to grant revenue, including our ARPA funds that we brought in. Possibly creative fodder.
To cover.
Yeah.
To cover all.
Cover salaries. Um. Yeah, we we needed to allocate those funds. In twenty twenty four, so we brought them in to cover salaries. Uh. General property tax revenue. General property tax revenue follows the same pattern over months and years with spike in April and June and traditional dive in July. Compared to December of twenty twenty three, the city has collected fifty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars more in twenty twenty four. Not a lot, but a little bit. Unfortunately, Ray Grant County sales tax revenue. Came in lower than twenty twenty three in both November and December, causing our year to date through December twenty twenty four to be eighty one thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars more than twenty twenty three. City sales tax, however, was a bit higher in November, lower in December compared to twenty twenty three. However, year to date through December of twenty twenty four, um, we're still thirty six thousand, three hundred and eighty three dollars higher than last year. Overall, total tax revenue is up year to date through December of twenty twenty four compared to December twenty twenty three by fifty one thousand dollars, so. Barely flat. Was still. There a little bit. Uh, overall expenditures in the general fund have just decreased through December, again to the double payment made on Sky High in December of last year. And city hall building improvements. Increases in expenditures that offset that decrease for twenty twenty four include things like increased staffing. Large capital purchases, general liability insurance increases. And several projects paid. For through grants. Uh, the water fund increase is due to the increase in wages and benefits and increased insurance costs. Sewer fund increases were due to wages and benefits. Increase in general liability, insurance, utilities and engineering expenses that were reimbursed through grant funds. General fund expenditures average average four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy four dollars per month. November's expenditures came in below that average while December was over. And again, the September outlier was the Sky High loan payment. Comparing monthly budgeted amounts for expenditures at a hundred percent of the budget year were under budget by four percent in the general fund. The margin narrowed for all departments due to the budget amendment that we made in December. Uh. Current ratio is five point eight nine. dollars of current assets for every one dollar of current liabilities. And we have eight point nine five months of operating expenses in the general funds total unassigned on balance. Any questions? No?
Okay, I, I'd like to make, just make a comment. Now, Carla Schreiber represents the Alcott Foundation. And earlier in the year, she had requested we do some sort of a celebration. And her schedule, we just haven't gotten it scheduled, but they paid off or made the final payment to the city a full year earlier than what they anticipated. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Alcott Foundation and what they've done for our community and their major, major contributions to the Sky High Event and Conference Center. It's very remarkable. Thank, thanks Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Stafford's Proposals, Reports and Actions, Recreation.
Just got one thing to report. I'm on vacation right now. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
What's that?
You choose something funny to do on your vacation. I, I could think of something better.
Okay. Um, right now, we're uh, starting a women's self-defense class. We're gonna hold one on the fifteenth. It's gonna be free. Normally, it's a fifty-dollar class. Um, we're also gonna be doing a concealed carry. Our sixteenth at Sky High. Soccer registration will begin. Um, it's middle of March. The uh, Chapman Park will be packed uh, with kids from all over the valley. Um, we're gonna be hosting that again here at Chapman. Um, and also, men's and women's basketball be starting. This year, we're gonna try to host it at Sky High and that, and see how much the guys complain and how many teams we can lose. That's uh, um, we're gonna start off again with pickleball, also an add-on for pickleball as a drop-in every Tuesday night. Um, it was really starting to grow and pick up uh, the last time that we had it, so that'll begin around March eighteenth uh, for the pickleball and whatnot, so. And that's it for recreation. Any questions?
So Durbin, Durbin, first have a great vacation. But, but, um, when you get back, can you get with Nita and so that we've got some sort of a press release on some of these classes on our website? Okay, great. Safe travels. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Durbin. Have a good vacation.
And then counsel, Anika was able to come in, and so um, if you don't mind, if we just add her back in for, for her quick report.
My apologies for being late. I had a bunch of kiddos that didn't get picked up on time. I had to wait for parents, so. Um, Kids Connection really just has kids. Forty-five to fifty each day after school, um. And that's about all we have going on. Um, I did, the last time I was here, I had mentioned that we had applied for a grant through Care for Colorado and we made it to part two. Um, the part two submission was submitted on February sixth, I believe. Um, and so now we're just waiting for word to see if we make it on to um, round three, and then they will come down and do a site visit and we will get to show them that we are worthy of their funds. Um, and that's really all I've had going on. Have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sky High.
You missed me, I know you did. So I have those numbers for you. Um, all right, so in February, we're looking to end the month with about forty-nine events. Um, in March, so far, we have fifty-five events booked, and then in twenty twenty-five, we've already booked three hundred and twenty-seven events. That's February.
That's it?
Considering we only did five hundred events, five hundred and twenty-three events last year, I'm a little scared. We'll see what we come up with this year.
It's like you're not even trying, so.
I know, you know, I've been a little bit of a slacker. I'll, I'll get better at it.
Should be at least be able to squeeze like three events a day, at least.
We did only have one today, so sorry. Um, ad conference was a big success. Um, numbers were a little bit down from last year, but we had Temple Brandon last year, so that's really hard to follow up. Uh, but we still had about sixteen hundred participants on property throughout those three days. Um, we are getting ready to host Crane Festival. It's coming up really, really fast. Um, that'll be March seventh through the ninth, so we hope you all can come out and um, participate and see all the different festivities going on. Um, they have moved a lot of their educational sessions and keynote speakers over to Sky High, um, since that's not gonna be at the theater anymore, um, so majority of their events will be out at Sky High now.
So will the Cranes be here?
They better be. They haven't uh, given me their itinerary just yet, but they should be.
Oh, no, there's a bunch, and they're squawking. Yeah, yeah, they start, they showed up a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, here. Um, Sky High is starting a new event. Um, so starting March second, the first and third Sundays of every month from four PM to six PM, we are going to be doing dance lessons. Um, so line dances, two-step, swing, um, we're gonna kind of play it by ear and see what participants wanna learn. Um, we're really excited to start this. She's gonna be there. Um, but we're hoping to keep this as a year-round event, um, and then potentially work in quarterly dances where we bring in a band so that all of their hard work at the lessons can pay off. Um, at this point, we have a volunteer instructor, so we don't have any costs on it. Um, so lessons will be free, um, but dances, there will be a cover charge to get into. We hope to see you there. Um, a couple of other things we have going on. I met with the public health inspector today, um, just to make sure that we are on track and um, correct in what we are doing. Um, so we'll be updating some of our food policies at Sky High as well as creating a preferred food vendor list. That way, we're only allowing food vendors that have the proper, proper licensing and documentation to come onto our property. Um, we did receive a small grant from the SLV Council of Government and DOLA um, for just under four thousand dollars. Um, and this is for added infrastructure for additional security cameras out in the rodeo arena and rodeo grounds. Um, so that'll be in the grandstands, in the backstaging area, and covering some of the corrals. Um, so we just got approval for that, and we'll start work on that um, here shortly. All of that has to be done by March thirty-first, so we're gonna make it fast and furious. Um, we did just release an RFP to upgrade the arena lights to LEDs, um, which will help us financially and create a better event um, for all of our rodeos out there. It'll have better lighting. Um, and in that RFP, we did add some additional safety and security lighting to um, the backstaging areas, the corrals, and out into the parking areas back there a little bit. Um, I will be getting ready to go to my second year of the Academy for Venue Safety and Security in March. Um, so I will miss my March staff report, cuz I'll be in Houston. Um, if I pass my test, I'll graduate. So crush fingers for me. Um, but leaving this um, academy, I will have a full safety and security plan for uh, daily operations and um, emergency situations for Sky High. Any questions?
There's no if and you will pass.
Crash your fingers.
You did not hear me.
Take the test twice if I have to. Perfect. Then the last thing I have um, is to introduce my assistant manager, Tori Trujillo. Um, and she actually just came back from a conference herself, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about that.
And we have to listen to you too, doesn't it?
Yeah, I didn't think you were gonna have to listen to me today. Um, good evening, counsel. As Steph mentioned, I'm the assistant manager for the Sky High complex. I've had the opportunity to attend the Guest X Conference last month in Charlotte, North Carolina. This conference focused on providing the best experience for our guests, which includes more than just customer service. They also focused on how much to, um, how to provide a safe event without minimizing the guest experience. The last item was, that was covered, um, was about teamwork and how working together makes a better experience for everyone. I also was able to tour the Blumethaw Arts Theater, which is really cool. And that gave me a different uh, perspective. And I was grateful for the opportunity to work on my professional development. So, any questions? Nope.
Fantastic. Are you teaching Stephanie about teamwork?
Trying.
You guys got a great team out there. Appreciate you. Thanks. Mr. Andrew, planning.
Okay, um, so this last month, continued working on grants and grant agreements was a very large portion of the month. Um, you've conducted a lot of meetings. Um, some of our grants are pausing on payments. So we have some outstanding invoices that we'll have to figure out as they move forward. Um, thankfully, we're not committed very far. Um, it's kind of some smaller numbers. Um, but the federal grant stuff has had an effect as far as their freezing. Each agency's doing their own thing. So um, we've had to work with each agency on, are you gonna still pay me or not? Some of them are like, as soon as you get the invoice, send it in and we'll pay you, and then when they stop to stop again, we'll stop paying you. Um, so we're, we're, we're working through that. Uh, Rob and I both are kind of working through that. I finished up a grant agreement with DOT uh, for some additional lane striping, some equipment, a safety study. Uh, we're using some of the, the federal funds that we are still getting to create a safety action plan with the Safe Streets For All grants. And really what that does for us is it provides us with a framework for where should we go next? Um, as far as our safety improvements, is it an intersection? Is it another, you know, a stoplight? Like, what is the thing that we need to do next? Um, and it helps us when we write our grants. They wanna know, is it in a plan? Has it been identified? Um, so this will give us those things. It was a fairly easy um, grant to write. I worked really well with SLB Go to get it done. So we're finishing up the grant agreement on that. Um, this week, I submitted a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant to Colorado Department of Transportation uh, for the highway safety H-SIP, I can't think of the IIs. Um, but it's for either on or off-system roads, and it identif- or it takes an identified risk, and it works toward mitigating it. So ours is Sharon Avenue, um, at one sixty. So we have a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant out to turn into a ninety-degree angle with a couple of turn lanes. Um, at this time, we're not planning on a stoplight. We just want to be able to make it into a ninety so that people can actually see. And you don't have those two turn lanes at one time. Um, so that grant went in this week. We'll hear back from that in the next little bit. So that was actually a grant that I wrote because CDOT told us to. Um, the region manager for um, our region, who also is part of the granting board, um, told us we need to go ahead and submit for it. They really wanna get this done. If they had get funds, the funds are right now for twenty twenty-eight. If there's funds available earlier, they will execute earlier, and she said I need to go ahead and write it cuz right now they have some extra funds. Um, so hopefully, that's good news. We'll see when we get the grant back, whether or not we've uh, got it approved or not. I'm working on the pre-development, the final documentation and the pre-development grant for the URA we discussed earlier. Um, and then working on managing and remaining compliant with my other grants. Uh, which is a challenge as we, you know, are starting all our federal grants and then they're shutting down and moving and changing. So again, that's been kind of a fun thing. Um, met this week with uh, stamp, or this month with Stampede, um, Gigi, myself, um, Lieutenant Harvard and Stephanie all went, and we chatted with them about what Stampede, the impact as far as people, like, we gave them from twenty seventeen till now, their demographics, how many people they came, where they came from, the counties they came from. Uh, it was a very uh, good meeting overall. Um, they wanna engage a little more fortunately targeted marketing using the AI data that we get from Placer. And looking at other events and seeing where they can do some better targeting. So I think that was a great event for, a great meeting for us. Um, helped work on that relationship a little bit, um, which, I mean Stampede is always fun. It's always, cuz it's that four days of Boston, sort of, it gets mad at some point or another. Um, so just helping to make sure that we do the best job we can with them. So uh, Gigi, Miles, and myself are working with Heather from the Chamber and other members of the Chamber Tourism Board for Destination Blueprint, um, which is helping us develop a marketing strategy for tourism and color, or in monolitha. Um, so we're still working through that process, working on a second day to half event, um, where we'll have some local tourism stakeholders um, come together and come up with, help develop the strategy that will then get presented back to the Chamber's Tourism Board. Um, and my hope and Gigi's hope is that we can get some outside interest outside of the Chamber and outside of the city to pick up and be the champion for that marketing, cuz like, it's great that we can do it, but I would really love for somebody to, as a, you know, skin in the game as far as stakeholder as a private citizen to step up and wanna help us develop that plan. Um, so continuing working on the code, um, working on the parking ordinance you guys requested. Uh, I should hopefully have that for, I'll have most of my data for review for planning and zoning next week. Since we're currently doing the revision, we wanna make sure that anything we do now aligns with what we want when we redo our code. I don't wanna change something now that changes again in nine months. So I'm gonna go over the reviews or the changes with them uh, uh, on the twenty-seventh, uh, which is our next plan meeting. In addition to going over code at that meeting, we are going to discuss the changes to the CBO district boundaries. Um, we would like to change them uh, with the new code. And then also, when we redo our parking, it might make sense to go ahead and do that then. So we're working through some of those things. As well as we have a public hearing for a minor subdivision for four oh one Stallow, um, which is Randy Martinez. He wants to subdivide, he basically owns the entire block. He's gonna subdivide it into three different partnerships. Um, so we'll have that public hearing on the twenty-seventh. Then the URA will meet on March the third. Um, we'll continue the discussions of how to develop those properties. Um, so that's some of what we've been doing recently. Um, and you guys have any questions?
Yeah, thanks DJ. City manager.
We're going from a post-it to a box, huh? Escalation's extreme.
So DJ talked a lot about the grants. Um, it really is very, it's really discour- discouraging because right now, we had two million dollars on two different grants through the EPA. One was for the asbestos. Start on this building. We don't know where that stands right now. The other one. Sorry, they're both on EPA. The other one is through the Forest Service, and that was for the trees and, and that. And so we're just kind of stuck in this quagmire of what to do, like many other communities. Uh, there was a yesterday, yesterday at the Rio Grande County Commissioners Meeting, they had people that showed up and few of them were actually emotionally distraught in sharing their concerns over the federal employees that have been let go. Seems like willy-nilly. So I did reach out to, to CML to see what they are doing on this. And they're working with Colorado County's Inc. as well as the governor's office to send a letter to share and a lot of our concerns of what do we do with these grants that we've already been, that we already have under contract, and now we can't move forward on them. The one positive grant that uh, Rob was gonna double-check with the, with Homeland Security. But uh, that lady we're working with is pretty much, as soon as you get have an expenditure, get it to me ASAP. And that grant is to continue then with the generator out at Sky High and then the RV and parking spaces. Part of that particular grant was uh, from the feds, was also two hundred thousand dollars from Department of Local Affairs. Department of Local Affairs wanted our, our, the grant funding we received from them to primarily go towards the generator. So I've asked Rob to keep moving forward on that. So I've asked Rob to keep moving forward on that one and, um, cuz he thinks that could come out in under the two hundred thousand. So we'll at least be able to hopefully meet that obligation. So here it is, we've got these grants on hold and yet we had a meeting with U S D A Rural Development. And then with the Department of Energy and the Department of Energy. Has funds apparently that they want to spend on energy efficiency type projects. So we talked to them about the, um, wastewater treatment plant. So, we've talked a little bit about this, Rob and I will have a better conversation with you at a later date. But we're basically looking for twelve million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant. We can apply up to ten million under this particular grant. The piece though, that's a little bit challenging is they want more energy efficiency type stuff built into the plant. So that, that, that thus raises the cost, and so how do we make it sure that this all balances out? And I really hope that they're serious that they do still have the funding because it's a lot of work. Our in- water engineers primarily, primarily doing all of the work, we have to send in a, a, um. What do you call it, like a project paper? And then if. Department of Energy accepts the project paper, then they'll invite us to go ahead and apply for the full grant. So we're, we're optimistic, but we're also very, very cautious. Um, we had a meeting this last week with. Uh, the golf board and the contractors, they are very excited to get started, so. They're hoping to break ground in March, and so they're moving forward and, and, uh. They want that building project to be completed by the end of, of twenty twenty-five. And then I got some, some sad news, I'm gonna say, the optimistics. Do not want to put on an, an event for Cinco de Mayo or for the Suds and Sounds. And the two primary people that created both of the events have both left the community. And so they've just kind of run out of steam, they don't have a lot of manpower within their organization to carry it on. And so, uh, it was. We're putting out feelers to see who else we can find that might be interested in picking this up because, you know, the, the. Cinco de Mayo has really grown in the last four or five years that they've been doing it and has brought a lot of people into downtown. And then I guess the San Luis Valley Veterans Rec- Recreation. Uh, Recreation, um, they're looking at possibly picking up the Suds and Sounds. And that is a car show event that's in August. So we'll see. Yesterday I received a present in the, that has come to me anonymously. I don't know who, who bought this, but it gave me a good smile. Because I think somebody is, is pleasantly teasing me about our Christmas lights. And I got this sweater. So I wanted to bring that and show it. Yeah, wait, there's more. It lights up. I'll probably give this to Stephanie to wear next Christmas.
I do love my Christmas butters.
So, I just wanna fully thank whoever sent this to me, I don't know if you're listening, I don't know if you're in this room. But thank you, it was fun and we will get this out next season. And that's it.
That's cool. Just so you know, when you asked me if I did something like that, I don't have that kind of talent. We're not done with you.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, we completed your evaluation. As expected, you've done really well. During the budget, we have approved a four percent raise for you, which you have not been taking. I make a motion that you take your four percent raise and adjust your contract accordingly. Not twice the mayor to sign. Said adjustment.
Thank you.
As so stated by Jason. Any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Can I think about this? Yes.
Motion carries to approve a four percent raise for city manager G D Dennis. And for her to, um, correct her contract.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've tested you. Thank you, G G. Okay, we'll go to council committee, city commission and council reports. Mr. Ren. Mr. Howard. Well, I gotta hold on to where's my little post-it?
Everyone can leave.
Just, uh, you know, we've had a lot of opportunities over the. Last six months and, uh. As far as us, I think it's made us stronger, it's turned in, put this all together and keep it together, so I think all council members and Victor. Fortunately, he's not here, but thank you guys for. Thick and thin, we're in it, so.
I'll say this. You got it. As much as I love seeing the federal government be audited on everything, I am really sorry for how much pain in the butt it's actually causing. I didn't really throw a hand grenade at everything on that one, but. I do love seeing them get all of it.
And one other thing that was put in front of me is we need to congratulate Eric Lorenz. Jason's son. Uh, he was one of thirty individuals accepted in the United States Army Veterinary Corps. So that's awesome. He's the second lieutenant, that's great. Good for you, Jason. Well, I know your wife for a long time, so she's probably cracked the whip on that.
So where's it gonna be stationed?
So he's still in vet school, so he's gonna.
He's gotta complete that.
But once he completes that, then they'll find out where he's gonna get.
Cool. Well, with that, I will say, uh, we will adjourn the meeting till March sixth, six P M, the city council, money strong.
Oh boy, we haven't had anybody in in a long time. Yeah, that's been a long time.
It seems a little weird.
I'm really glad she had to be here.